Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room here at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda tonight, we have Report of Capital Planning Committee, Fields Project Report, and Southfield Update. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Ed Kimball.
Good evening, welcome to tonight's meeting. Would you all please rise and join us for a pledge of allegiance led by our Veterans Agent, Mr. Materna?
Pledge of Allegiance, flag, the United States of America, the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The audience, participants, and general public should be aware that any and all portions of this open meeting may be recorded by audio and video resources. All some of this meeting may be rebroadcast periodically by WRPS or other outlets. Persons wanting a DVD copy of this meeting should contact WRPS or the Board of Selectmen's Office, a small fee will be charged. With that, the first order of business, we need to invite Town Clerk Donna Shortall, is she here? So we can swear. Oh, so am I right? Sorry, Donna, I'm looking at the audience. You blended right in with the waltz. So you can administer the oath to Mr. Mullen.
Do you want to swear that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office to each of the persons?
I do. Thank you, Donna.
Mike, you want to read a statement, I think?
Yeah, I just want to let everyone, first of all, thank everyone throughout the town for their support. As I mentioned in the forums and, you know, like out and about over the past few weeks and the past few months, I love this town. I love Rockland. And it is just an incredible honor and it is a privilege to serve a town that, you know, I was born and brought up here, my family's done so much more and, you know, and I look forward to getting to work on the things and the projects and the initiatives that we have ahead. At the outset, though, I just wanted to mention that I wanted to publicly disclose that I will not be voting on any fire department issues or any school department related issues. My father is a Rockland firefighter and my wife is a teacher in the Rockland Public Schools and so I just wanted to publicly disclose that. And I know, you know, I am working with the town council just to get further guidance from him. I know he's been in touch with the Attorney General's Office just because, you know, just from the outset, I want to make sure that everything I do, as one of your selectmen, I do, you know, in the highest regard of the law. So I just wanted to begin with that and I will have more information forthcoming, but I just wanted to begin by mentioning that and let you know that, you know, I'm taking this role very seriously, so thank you.
Okay. With that, the first order of business we have tonight is reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, but before we start, I just want to make a note that Larry Ryan is running a little bit late tonight, but he is coming. And Mr. Welch is out on vacation, so he will not be joining us tonight. So we have reorganization of the Board of Selectmen. Do we have...
Motion to make Mr. Kimball Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor to vote? Thank you very much, guys.
Due to his absence, I'll make a motion to make Larry Ryan Vice Chairman.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor to vote? Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have open forum, which almost on open forum tonight. Open session minutes of April 5th. Unfortunately, Mr. Johnson wasn't here then and Mr. Mullen wasn't here then, so those will have to wait or revisit. Okay, so we'll postpone those for now. Under unfinished business, item number four, we have the playground in Hartso Park. Janelle Hussey, is she here tonight?
Thanks for having us. Play Areas for Rockland Kids was founded by my husband Chris and I just 14 months ago. We are an established nonprofit that is composed of an all-parent volunteer board. Park's mission is to create and update existing play structures to ensure the safety, imagination, and well-being of the children and families of Rockland. We are thrilled to be given an opportunity to fundraise funds to fulfill the money's portion of the Kaboom and Yokohama grant that the town of Rockland has just recently received. Through various fundraisers that we have hosted in the last three months, Park has raised $13,500. And every penny has been donated to the June 25th build of the playground. This upcoming Saturday, April 23rd, we are hosting our largest fundraiser at Players. We are asking for the community to come out and support us. Tickets can be purchased at Players, the Youth Commission, and from any board member. They are $10 in advance and 15 at the door. Help us reach our goal of $25,000. Each additional dollar we raise will be poured into enhancement projects and playground equipment for the playground. This wouldn't be possible if we did not have the support from the Park Department, Youth Commission, and all of the families that have supported us at each fundraiser that we have hosted. This project is more than just a playground. It's an opportunity for individuals in our community to come together to be a part of such an amazing gift that we can give the children of Rockland to enjoy for years to come. We will be looking for volunteers for the June 25th builds. It's our hope that we will have the support and free labor from you, the selectmen. No pressure. Six hours, start to finish, we'll have a brand-new playground. Children and families in Rockland can start playing on it three days later, Tuesday.
I remember when we did this for the, when my kids were a lot younger, my 15- and 13-year-old, not that old now, but the Esten was in disrepair and we did the same thing. Kaboom, I think, was the company and it was the build-out. I mean, it's amazing how quick it goes.
It is. The entire process has been very labor-intensive, but it's amazing to see how far we've come in just these short couple of months. We just had Design Day this past Thursday and to see the kids, all their drawings and their excitement was enough push just to make it that much more exciting for us. And the families that have supported us at each of these fundraisers are very anxious and excited for this to happen.
Now, let me ask you this, I have a high schooler and I know they need to get community service time with this, you know, if this would count? Because I can get them down, I'd get them down no matter what, but I'd like to have it.
I will happily sign off on any community service hours. Park is a registered 501(c).
Good.
So, and they encourage families, kids, all ages to participate in the builds.
Good, okay.
So, thank you.
Yeah, we did a playground like this originally, I'm aging myself now, but 25 years ago and it was such a community bond raising. I think the good feelings flowed through the town for years.
Yeah, the problem is when the kids grow up and they don't use it anymore, you're kind of like, oh, that kind of stinks, but...
Well, grandkids will.
Yeah, 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 right.
I think Hartso Park in general is a hidden gem in town that a lot of people don't utilize as much as they should. And it's our hope that this playground will be an active participation in families', you know, lives, because play is important for kids.
Right. Did you want to discuss, you had a design night Thursday?
We did. We had a design night this past Thursday and that's where Kaboom and Yokohama, who's the sponsor, came. And it was great. We compiled three lists of must-have items that we wanted, things that we didn't like or things that we liked. And from there, Kaboom is bringing it to the engineers and three drawings will be compiled that we will then get back probably in about seven to 10 days from this past Thursday. And then we will vote as a community on which playground.
Now, if people can't work all day but could work a couple of hours or three hours...
If you have 15 minutes, I have 15 minutes of something for you to do.
That's great.
So, we'll take anything and everything, so, because we need at least a minimum of 150 volunteers for June 25th. No pressure.
We do have a sample list of some of the tools and things that they need, or are you borrowing these, or...
So, those specific details will be coming out shortly. All of the team members, we have our first conference call tomorrow night and we'll be discussing how we're handling all of that.
So, as they go forward with those things, we will be setting up a link as well on the town website so that anybody can go there and get the latest. Marcy's been doing a great job with some of the PR. I know that WATD has had a couple of public service announcements. Is somebody's going to be on Saturday?
It's actually, we just found out today, it's Friday and Nancy's going to be my, the Vice President of Play Areas for Rockland Kids, is going to be handling that call this week.
So, we'll be putting a link up on the website as well so that if anybody needs to know how to donate or how to volunteer time or how to donate equipment.
Maybe mention again when the Players...
Is this Saturday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM?
Do you guys have a Facebook account also, right?
We do Play Areas for Rockland Kids, or you can email us at rocklandplaygrounds@yahoo.com, or you can find me on any one of the colorful Rockland pages. Any one of our board members, we're actively posting, reminding people, encouraging people to come out and support us for this upcoming fundraiser.
And when, what time is the build on the 25th?
Details to be decided, but it's pretty early.
8:00 AM.
Closer to 7:00 and you'll be done probably about 2:00. So, all of those specifics, we're still kind of working out with Kaboom and Yokohama.
I know when we did the Esten, I want to say Home Depot sent a fleet of tools and employees to come down and help too. I don't know if you reached out.
So, there's some contract legalities that we're kind of, we have to be conscientious about because of the sponsor being Yokohama. There's a local sponsor, Sullivan Tire, who is contributing 100 volunteers to the build that day. So, adding additional companies and things like that, it gets a little dicey and some gray areas that we don't want to go into.
Well, what we can do is once you get your updates, someone can get you back in before the Board again so we can keep it in front of people.
Perfect. I'll keep begging. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janelle.
Appreciate the opportunity.
You have another meeting, Mr. Chairman, on June 20th, which is just five days before the build.
Perfect, we'll be here.
Thank you.
Why do we have it on June 20th?
June 21st.
Okay, 20th, I'll be here waiting.
21st.
I'm filling Mr. Ryan in his absence. He voted in to be Vice Chair.
Damn.
Congratulations.
I didn't stay away long enough.
You do have a majority of the members that were present for the other meeting if you want to take care of the minutes.
Okay, we have the minutes, going back to minutes, item number three, open session minutes of April 5th, 2016.
Wasn't to approve.
And I'll have to second because I was the only other person here. So, all those in favor to vote?
Two with two extensions. Thank you.
Okay, item number five, the rail trail cleanup. Donald?
This Saturday, April 23rd, just starting at 8:30 in the morning, we're having our annual spring rail trail cleanup. We've been doing the rail trail cleanup since 2012. It's a real community event and it doesn't conflict with the playground summer fundraiser. That's in the evening and we're in the morning, so you can spend all day helping open space in one way or the other in Rockland Saturday. This is our flyer, if you'd like, I have plenty of those. The publicity has been distributed to all the high schools, middle schools, Rogio schools. It's in the ledger, it's on the television, it's every place we could think of. We have participants, we usually get scouts. We're asking, we've sent out messages to all town departments. I think Ed said he was going to come and volunteer with us. The Park Department, as usual, is going to come and help us. And our annual sponsor, Home Depot, will be there too, providing the gubs, the water, the bags, and a truck and a crew of eight to help us clean up the rail trail. We also have, which we have been using, a inventory of trash. If you'd like more copies, I have that. And with Alan, a few years ago, we developed a sign-off for kids and others, a release so that everybody is legitimately on the rail trail cleaning up. Questions from the Board?
Anybody have any questions?
I have a comment. Be good for some of the high schoolers to earn their, what do you call it, community service hours.
It's there, we mentioned community and there and to any of the others, and that was the prime purpose, to get the word out to the schools so that people could be signed off.
We do have a release that any volunteers do have to sign. That's been developed both by Town Council and our insurance department. Additionally, we have notified every single department in town and asked for volunteers. I know that Peter Yule was working to try and coordinate scouts to help out. I also want to make sure that we remember Republic Services, our trash company here in town, they are donating a roll-off which will be down to the Park Department, so the bags will be collected there and they'll be taking them off there. And police and fire are cooperating. In the event we find chops or anything, we would notify them, not to pick that up. We don't want anyone in danger.
And thank you for this. The rail trail sign is at the end cover of the annual town report and in our town report. Thank you for putting the wildlife pictures that we have in our report, annual report. Any other questions?
Thank you. See you Saturday.
See you, Sandy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up under new visitors, item number six, Spring Gate Apartments Update. Linda Hamilton?
Good evening. My name's Linda Hamilton and I represent FHRC Management Corporation and Connolly and Partners. FHRC is a managing agent for Spring Gate Apartments and Connolly and Partners actually developed the property. Over the last two years, we have been looking for a program, a subsidy program, to, that would enable us to provide deep subsidy to residents and pay off one of our mortgages. We did that December 31st, 2014, and we were able to obtain 181 units of project-based Section 8 subsidy. Historically, the property has not had a lot of deep subsidy, so there's been a lot of turnover because as rents went up, people couldn't afford the rent. With this new program, we really believe that we've stabilized the property. With this new subsidy program, we were also able to obtain additional financing to make some improvements on the property. The largest improvements are going to be new bathrooms for all of units. We are expanding the community building so we can expand programs at the site. We're building a maintenance shop and we're doing some other various improvements to the property. I think the best thing about this redevelopment is that it will make Spring Gate Apartments affordable for the next 40 years, till at least 2056, at which time I will be 103 and someone else can take over. I'll be back. Some of the, some of the other things that we're really good about this program is that we'll be able to implement a supportive service program for the residents. That means we'll be looking in the county and in neighboring towns for partners with education. We'll be implementing education programs for the kids, college programs for kids and adults, trying to link up partnerships with employers so that we can get people employed. And I'm really good at that. I've done it, I've done it several times. And Donna, the new property manager, is very good at, I speak and she does. So whatever I say, she just makes sure, she makes sure that it happens somehow. It's like magic. Connolly and Partners has been around for a number of years. Bill Connolly has been a major developer of affordable housing in New England and he's really, really committed to this. We hope to close in May 2016 and we really thank the town for supporting us in this endeavor. One of the problems, like I said, at Spring Gate is that we haven't had the deep subsidy to, A, continue making improvements, hire the staff that we need to, and most importantly, to make the development really affordable for folks. It was a very difficult property to keep rented because rents kept going up and people's income didn't go up. And so it was a really tough balancing act. And now we finally know that we're going to be prosperous and a real contributor to the town of Rockland.
The facility is critical towards the count that we need for our affordable housing and actually the timeline was running out. We were somewhat concerned about having that inventory number removed as we try and reach our housing requirement of 10%. Also, you had mentioned, Linda, when we met with you, you were talking about going to a gated community?
One of the improvements, one of the other improvements that we are making is a security system. So we're installing 100,000 cameras so you can see everything. We hope to tie it into the police department. And what we'd like to do is put a gate at the front of the development that would check the license numbers of all visitors and find out where they're going to and getting that approval from residents so that we know who's coming in and out of the community. Because one of the problems that we have now in securing it is we don't know who's there. People say that things are going on at Spring Gate. We can't prove it, you can't prove it, we can't find them, but with the security gate, we'll know who's coming in and out and we'll be able to narrow down incidents. The police department is really happy with us right now.
The community is, I think.
Any questions from the Board?
I just want to thank you for, first of all, you know, being here after these improvements and, you know, and the update. I imagine, like as you just mentioned, like everything, like all these improvements have been done in conjunction with the police and fire on board and, you know, everything is good and shaped there.
It is. One of the things I'd like to say is that we have a summer fun program, and this is just a plug, and it really has kept the kids occupied in the summer times and it's really grown. But this year, since we're going to be working on the community building, we don't have the space for the program. And we do the summer program in conjunction with the swimming pool that's out there. We take the kids on field trips. They've built things on the property, they've planted gardens, they've built picnic tables. So it's been a really a great endeavor. So we're looking for a place actually to either send the kids to for summer camp or a place where we can, you know, continue our program just for this summer. So if anyone knows anywhere or anything, any little space that's available, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the Report of Capital Planning Committee. Joe Gamble.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Board. My name's Joe Gamble and I'm Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. I'll keep this brief tonight. Please, all the selectmen have received copies of our five-year capital plan for 2017 to 2021, within a company ranking list of the different projects on the plan. Basically, the Capital Planning Committee of Rockland is responsible for assessing the capital expenditures and needs for all the town departments. It requires evaluating the expenditures that need to be considered to put on the plan and this is presented to, every year we present this final plan to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. By state law and town charter, there should be no articles for town meeting that include expenditures over $50,000 over the useful life of more than five years. This year's plan is approximately, there's 31 projects on the plan this year, spread out between seven different departments in the town. The total is about $9.2 million. Break that down, it's basically the water department has projected about $1.3, the sewer department at $1.9 million, the highway department is at $8.7. The library is approximately just under $300,000. The apartment is at $4.2 million, just a little bit over. The fire department is about $787,000 and the school department is just under $1.9 million. The biggest projects this year that make up more than a little over 50% is the roads project that needs to be completed and the athletic complex that you believe you'll be hearing more of that tonight. Other members on the committee, I want to introduce them tonight. Here is Scott McKinley, he's our Vice President, I mean Vice Chairman, Richard Phelps, Joe Weisgerber, Ken Tochi, and Brian News. Along with the capital plan, we rank each of these projects on the capital plan on a, it's a, we have a, six questions we ask ourselves regarding each project and we rate them on a scale of two to 10, a multiple choice of questions. And based on the points, the higher the points, the more important or we believe the project is for the town. And that's basically, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions from the Board?
Since I'm the liaison to the Capital Planning Committee, I want to be the first to thank the three guys in the backseat that have their name on the resignation effective during the town meeting, and it's Scott McKinley, Joe Weisgerber, and Dick Phelps, who have done a great job, not only with the Capital Planning Committee but throughout the town in its history. And, you know, they rank right up there. They should have, we should have walls of honorable people and somewhere in this place and those guys would be right up near the top. Joe, thanks a lot for doing it. And again, we need some more people to come out and join the committee. It's one of the things we need to do in order to keep the town moving forward and to keep it in the modern era. I mean, these are the things that the state likes to see planned out and see that you have these things in place and you guys are doing a great job.
Yes, the committee was set up based on the state pushing for us to do it and it's helped with our fiscal rating and bond rating through over the years and I think it's a...
Had a great job too by all the guys. We'll find us some more people.
I have to tell you, if I could, while Scott's making his way up here, that Joe's done an outstanding job. We've been very lucky in this town with excellent Chairman as well as committee members on this committee. This is as good a capital plan as I've seen in any community. And I want to thank you, Joe.
It's just the way I wrote it.
I can read.
I thought the thunder has been stolen, but thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chairman. I'm reading the formal resignation letter sent to the Board of Selectmen and they do so for a couple of reasons. First of all, because it's been a significant amount of time that the three members who are resigning tonight have been charter members of the Capital Planning Committee, which began in the year 2004. So that means we've been around a few years to learn how to do the job. So please be advised that the three members of the Capital Planning Committee, Mr. Weisgerber, Mr. Phelps, and Mr. McKinley, are submitting their resignations effective at the conclusion of the 2016 town meeting. The three members have been charter members of the CPC since its inception in 2004. We strongly feel that the Capital Planning Committee has established a protocol that has enabled the town to create an effective five-year capital plan, ensuring stability and fiscal responsibility. We have received and appreciate the support from the Town Administrator Alan Chalker, Town Treasurer Eric Harrock, Board of Selectmen, and the department heads. The CPC has three remaining members and they will need the support of the Board of Selectmen and the town to... Selectmen and the town to increase the membership to the optimum number of seven, which we have never had since we started. Presently, we have six members, so we immediately have to replace three of us. It's been our pleasure to serve the town of Rockland. We leave this committee with a great sense of pride and know that we have helped make a difference in the fiscal future of our community. So thank you for bearing with us on this resignation. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, having also served with these three men on this committee since the beginning, when it was in 2004, losing these three guys at once is bad, but losing one of them individually would be bad as well. That committee, when we started it, was very boring, but I always said it was the best committee I served on, and it had to do with those three guys. I mean, we would sit around and talk about the business, but then I'd pick their brains and try to figure out, my kids were young, where I was going to send them to school, what we were going to do private for us at public. I really relied on those guys to shepherd me through those years. And I mean, I, losing them is just, I saw this, and I am saddened by it because the town is really losing three great individuals, and hopefully we can replace them with optimal men and women that can serve. But thank you, guys.
I was going to just mention that that's an agenda-neutral position, and we invite women and, you know, anybody over 18 years old, quite frankly, who wants to get a head start in government or government in college or anything like that. These are, this is a place where young people can start and learn something about the groundwork that it takes to run a town. So please come out and replace these three guys with three more beautiful people.
I just want to say, too, I mean, you look at the committees in town that really do the work, and, you know, let's hand some fellows up here, but it's really people like the Capital Planning Committee, the Finance Committee, you know, and they're the ones who are really doing the amazing behind-the-scenes work that is really keeping the town running. And, you know, the three gentlemen in back, I mean, they're legends in the town as, you know, as Mr. Johnson mentioned earlier, I mean, it's not only, it's not only the Capital Planning Committee, it's the Rockland Education Foundation, it's a school committee, it's, you know, it's Rockland, and, you know, you three gentlemen, you know, really are Rockland. So I just want to thank you very much for, for everything you've done on this. I mean, you look at the projects, you know, you've recommended, and they're really, really comprehensive projects and, you know, and items we need. So I just want to thank you.
We'll accept the resignation with regret, deep regret.
So moved.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
I didn't mean to jump on you there, but I thought.
No, it's okay, no.
That was a vote?
I'm.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the fields project report. Is Mr. Murphy here?
Hello, I'm Red.
Hello, everyone. I'm Steve Murphy, 23 Milbrook Drive, and I'm also on the Board of Park Commissioners. So a couple of years ago, we had a brain trust get together and kind of come to the conclusion that our fields in general were in pretty rough shape. So we, we were allowed to get a comprehensive study done by Gale Associates, and we've met with them a few times to determine the best course of action that we can take to kind of cover all the needs that we're lacking. So we felt now was the time. We are going to have a question, a warrant at town meeting for proposed new athletic complex. So what we thought was a good idea was to bring the selectmen up to speed as well as the public, the viewing public, and so forth. So that's what we're going to do. We do have a slide presentation. If any of you can't see, there is a handful of handouts here that might be helpful for you, but we're just going to give a brief synopsis. We know that we have many, many answers. We know that we also maybe have one or two questions that we don't have an answer to. We know that many people look at a project like this from different viewpoints. So what we can guarantee you is any questions that we don't have answers to, we will do our best to have answers before town meeting. So with that, you want to get going? And please, at any point anyone has any questions, feel free to stop me. We have the athletic director here from the high school. We have the park superintendent, so we also have the incoming superintendent of school. So hopefully, we can, we can put to bed any questions that you have right now. Okay? All right, so are we killing the lights or, no? Everyone see all right? Okay. It's up to you.
No, I think they can see all right.
Okay. Okay, great. So for those that don't know, the first picture here is the field at Bicentennial Park. That field serves as our varsity soccer field, I believe our JV soccer field. Many of our youth groups play there. I took this picture the other day, and I think you can agree, your field is in rough shape when someone's drawn a smiley face in the sand. That's where our goalies would be standing, right there. All the way down the field, it's in the same condition. And I do want to, you know, I should have prefaced this ahead of time, and I think everyone will agree with me. The conditions of these fields have absolutely nothing to do with our park department. It's just overuse is all it is. They're getting more and more use. Lacrosse has come into play, which is a big, they do some damage to fields, as does soccer and other sports, so.
Steve, excuse me. I'm getting a report that they can't see it on TV. So should we kill the lights?
Yes.
Thanks to my 13-year-old texting me. I don't know why he's watching it. It's school vacation week.
Okay, who's in charge of the lights?
Probably you, behind you.
Me? I gotta do it all.
Clyde Allen.
Okay. All right, so proceeding to the middle slide here, that is what many of you know is the oval. Years ago, served as a high school field for many sports. That's where the old track was. That is currently used by our high school and youth lacrosse leagues, teams and leagues. Youth football is also on that field constantly in season, and as you can see, that, that is in pretty, pretty bad disrepair there, too. And the only thing that we as a park department can do, and it's in the slide, it's in one of the upcoming slides, is shut the fields down for a period of time every year. Hopefully, we get perfect weather, they get the regrowth, and open them back up when we have to open them back up, so. Switching gears a little bit, I'm not sure how many of you utilize the track, but there's your, there's your track right there. I had many, many pictures, and it was just, it became redundant. So you can see there's major gaps in there. I know some of the seniors that I've talked to that have walked there literally have to walk with their head down from a safety concern before they step in one of these crevices. There is some bowing of certain areas of the track as well, so. It's a, correct me if I'm wrong, but 30-something years old. I know it's had some patchwork done to it over the years, but it's just, it's a safety concern, and it's just, it's, it's gone through its useful life, so. That is part of our new proposal, as you'll see in a minute, so. Any question on the conditions or anything before we cruise on there? Okay. Just a couple of points, I call it facts, I guess, and I'm going to guess some people are going to be shocked at this, but the Rockland High School and its student athletes have not hosted a home track and field meet since 2009, which, to me, as a resident, a lifelong resident, A, it's an embarrassment, and B, they deserve much better than that. You know, one of the little side lights of that is we also spend thousands and thousands of dollars every year busing these kids to away meets because we just literally can't have a, have a meet at home. In the last five years, there's been 13 new boys and girls lacrosse teams added at the youth and high school level. They came to us, started to come to the park department five or six years ago and said, "Okay, we have these teams. Where are we going to play?" And we sat there and stored them and said, "We have no idea." Lacrosse is a great sport. As Mr. Johnson will attest to, it does beat the fields up pretty, pretty bad. And again, we have no recovery time. I did a quick little informal survey, and my guess is this next, this next bullet point is probably understated, but there's currently approximately 45 hours per week of desired field time that cannot be accommodated. Again, puts our youth behind, you know, puts our youth in the hole right out of the gate. I had a occurrence about three weeks ago, I had an hour of downtime in Hanover, so I stopped at the track to do a little walking, and the high school lacrosse team was practicing. I think it was a six or seven o'clock at night. And when they wrapped up, I was walking by, and I asked the coach, I said, "How long you been out here?" And I believe they, he had said that they were into their eighth or ninth practice, eighth or ninth practice at that point. Our high school lacrosse team had not been on the field yet. So it just puts us behind the eight ball that much more. As I alluded to, the two main fields being utilized must be shut down by the park department from June through August to allow for regrowth. And in a perfect world, we get that regrowth. Many times, we don't, based on the weather. Obviously, we're trying to recoup it in, in the summer months, which isn't the ideal to do it, ideal time to do it, but it's what we have to do, given all the other schedules. Walking track at Bicentennial Park is rapidly deteriorating, kind of redundant on that point. And this is very interesting. Of all the surrounding towns, only Carver and Hull do not currently have turf in use or in development. Many towns actually have multiple turf fields. So anything, anything on those points? Okay. So just so everyone understands here, so you can get your bearings, directly to the north of this would be the stadium. Over here would be the basketball courts and so forth. To the west is Colonel Duffy Way. Here you would have Memorial Park School to the south, and obviously, over to the east, you would have the rail trail. So as you can see, a full complex, 800 seats, with a, you know, full, full multi-use field, full track and field, full walking track. One added benefit, and I have it another slide, is we are adding, just by way of the project here, we're eliminating a school issue, a Memorial Park School issue that they've had for years, and that is lack of parking. So obviously, these parking spaces would be right up a budding or close to Memorial Park School, and it gives them, anyone who knows the parking situation at Memorial Park, there is no parking situation. People just park wherever they can, so. So that's it in a nutshell on the layout of it. Press box, some ticket booths. We are going to, and I have another point, we are going to utilize the current lavatories at the stadium, which saves us a significant amount of money. We're going to need to do some work to them, but again, it saves us a significant amount of money. So again, you have your entryway down here, you have a secondary entryway off of that parking lot, you've got all your track and field events and so forth. So one thing I'm guessing that will come up in question, you'd also might notice that here and here are our two softball fields. So obviously, with this project, I should have mentioned, too, the layout of this project, it doesn't have to be this way, but we really should put it this way due to solar array. You cannot have goalies playing a soccer game with the sun setting in their eyes and so forth, lacrosse goalies and so forth. So the layout of this, we had a lot of discussion on this. The layout of this is perfectly designed to alleviate that problem. So again, we eliminated the softball fields, but there's your brand-new softball complex. So again, to give everyone their bearings here, this is Bicentennial Park. Reed Street, I'm not sure if it's Reed Street or Lower Reed Street, I'm not sure if you recall it. That's the existing parking over there. So it kind of gives you an idea of the, of how this would, how this would fit in. Two full varsity-level softball fields with, you know, obviously backstops, seating. What you have here is you have temporary fencing. I'm not sure who's familiar with that, but what they do is they actually have poles in the ground that are recessed into the ground. When an event is happening or really when it's in season, they'll, we will put up a temporary fence that meets all MIA requirements and whatnot, and when we're done with it, we can take it down. So with that, we're actually also able to throw another full multi-use field right in the middle, worked out perfectly, so we get that much more field time. One note on this, this is not turf. This is all, this is all real grass. So. That's the layout so far, so far. Any, any questions on that?
Sure. The pine grove area, it seems as though that first complex, it seems as though it's going to be encroaching on the pine field area.
Yes, it is.
And, I mean, that was dedicated, it's the sanctuary ground for, for all veterans and everything. And I'm representing veterans right now. You're already taking down the softball field. That's dedicated after Vietnam veterans have killed overseas. Now you want to encroach on all the other veterans that have been killed in the former wars. I mean, do we need this field in that angle right there, in that position, to encroach on our veterans and everything like that? What our, our memory and history of our dead is going to be, is just going to be a new field?
That's obviously not our mentality. The layout of the field, if it is going to go into this space, it would have to go this way. You know, we can certainly, as a park commissioners and so forth, I'm sure everyone, I speak for everyone on the commission, that we'll be more than happy to sit down with you. You know, if there is, there is some encroachment into the pine groves, we'll be more than happy to come up with a plan with you guys for maybe regrowth. There is some space on the other end of the groves up towards the stadium. And a lot of those trees are actually, and Peter can speak better than I can on this, a lot of those trees are in rough shape right now. So, you know, again, in order to get this field into this space, that's the way it would be. But again, more than happy to sit with you folks. You know, we can, we can put a plan together for regrowth.
Yeah. The only thing I would ask is maybe like, we can get a satellite bit of image of how this is going to lay onto that field. I'd like to see that, just to see how far it actually comes into the area.
Okay.
Because I mean, there's a, there's a lot of concern, veterans out there.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I don't have, I don't have the concrete answer, but others have asked this question before, and we can get probably Gale Associates to do a little bit more study on it, but our estimate was no more than 25% of that current groves would be affected. So again, let's work on a plan to get the other side, you know, rebuilt up. We are putting two new fields over. We did have this discussion before as well. We are putting those two new fields over Bicentennial Park, and we're more than happy to have discussions about rededicating those fields.
I mean, I'm all in favor of.
And even this field, huh?
Yep.
It's concerning.
Absolutely, as well it should be, as well it should be. And if we had an option that, that took this problem off the table, we would absolutely go with it. But again, given all that there's a bunch of variables we're trying to work with, this was the solution. And again, you know, we can have the discussion on the, you know.
Maybe the solution, but maybe not the answer.
Okay, very good. You're welcome. I had some other, yep.
Are all the fields going to be grass fields?
No. Complex back to our.
Just lower.
This is, this is turf as well as synthetic track. Bicentennial Park remains as a complete natural grass facility. The problem, if we did this field in, if we did this field in natural grass, two years from now, we're going to have the exact same problems we're dealing with now. We just, there's so much use desired, natural grass just can't, can't keep up with it.
What's the lifespan of the object of turf?
What we've been told is 15 years. It also depends on the solar array, depends on the sun, you know, how, how much wear and tear it gets.
So roughly around year 12, we have to start thinking about replacing it?
Correct. One thing that we are going to put in place, though, and I have it in the next slide, but we also anticipate getting some significant revenue use for this field, which we replaced in an account to help with that down the road.
One more question. The actual stadium, in terms of what he had to say, I think the actual stadium, the story goes that World War II vets, when they were coming home to town, wanted to give them a grade, and they wanted something more permanent, and it was that whole stadium that they wanted.
Correct. The stadium is going untouched. In fact, the stadium will be, the life of the stadium will be extended because we're taking everything out of there except for baseball. I believe you're referring to the softball field.
Softball field.
He's referring to one of the softball fields. He's not referring to the stadium. I think all the softball fields, and I believe the little league fields up on Spring Street, a lot of them were dedicated, yeah, he's not referring to the stadium at all.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, the replacement of the turf at 12, year 15 is a fraction of, real small fraction of the cost of the overall cost of the project.
Oh, absolutely.
It's just the turf itself needs to be.
Correct. And I think, and I don't know the exact answers, but I know there's many towns around that have actually had it for longer than that and, or coming up on that, and they're seeing the use for life longer than 15 years. But again, I can't really, I can't get any scientific data on that, but, yeah, so there will be a revolving account, I believe is what we call it, right? And a lot of the rental and use fees and so forth will be put into that revolving account, knowing down the road that we'll be needing some, some. account, knowing down the road that we'll be needing some replacements here.
Steve?
Go ahead, Gus.
Steve, Jeff Nagerian, Chief of Regulatory. Steve, I'm the commander of the Rockland Island Vet Council, and I'm also a member of the Monument Committee in the town for many years. And as such, as far as you progress so far, I'm a little concerned that no one's ever approached, from my knowledge, the, certainly they haven't approached the Rockland Island Vet Council, they're just members of the DAB, the American Legion. We've done a lot with monuments in the town, as a matter of fact, the instrumental at the time was Little League, now it's a softball field, is dedicated, there's a plaque on the back of that, to one of our fallen vets from Vietnam, who played Little League on that field when he was a kid. And also, the way it's set up, it is going to encroach, and it's already been said, and I'm not trying to be repetitive, on the grove area, which was dedicated with twenty-four trees planted, but the twenty-four Rockland vets were killed in World War II. It's hallowed ground, and it seems rather, that as far as you're going with the plans, it was rather frivolous and not really nice to not have contacted the Rockland Island Vet Council or the Monument Committee, which takes care of all the monuments within the town properly. I agree that we need some other facilities, but I'm concerned that we're going to be desecrating or not being proper honor, proper honor to those that went before us.
Well, first off.
And I know my old man would be rolling his brains if you guys interfere with anything with that.
Well, first off, I apologize, you know, this thing kind of, you know, it got developed a couple of years ago and it kind of went dormant for a little bit, and now it's really coming to the forefront, so I do apologize for not, you know, getting you guys involved. Again, I don't have, I don't think I have the answers that you're looking for, so hopefully, you know, as two agencies here, we can work together and get you guys the answers that you want, maybe even improve on what's been done by you folks, and hopefully there's a, you know, a happy, a happy solution for everything. I think as you, those that know Pete Uhl, Pete is very, very adamant about protecting all the history and the, you know, kind of the legacy that goes with all the different towns and park areas that we have in town. As a board, we're very much in, on the same mentality as Pete, so we, you know, I can sit here as one commissioner and tell you that we will be happy to meet with you, we will get solutions that hopefully, you know, that suffice for you folks and also allows us to move ahead here.
I look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, could we maybe just realign that field a little bit to get away from any trees that were encroached on, and still dedicate this.
As long as it gets into your plans for the solar layer.
I'm sure we'll be going back to Gale Associates as this gets closer to a town vote, so we'll try to see, you know, if we can get those answers as quickly as we can. Who's up, Joe?
Joseph Rees, Commissioner, Rockland Parks. A lot of these trees have beetle disease. There's like seven earmarked to come down this week, I believe, or next week, if the weather goes bad. A lot of those trees are probably going to die off anyways because of this beetle, and there's no way of saving them, so it's a tough thing. We understand the problem that you're facing and mentioning, but there's no way of saving the trees because of this beetle disease.
Those were my lines. The hardwood trees, from my understanding, were the ones that were dedicated, not the pines, it's the pines that are dying. We do have three of the trees, limbs are falling, just due to age, weather and whatnot. We have lost about a half dozen throughout, well, for the past thirty years that I've been there, that we already have to replace.
Well, without a doubt, they're sixty-seven years old, I'm not surprised, but regardless of, every one of them happens to go down. It's still hallowed ground that was dedicated to our fallen veterans, and we need to preserve that or make sure we do not do anything bad against it.
It's just like a gravestone, and even if the gravestone wears away, the body's still there.
Right.
So it's hollow ground, so we don't want to encroach on it too.
I have a question about Reed Street's softball field, you say it's going to be a multi-field? Who else is sharing that field besides softball?
No, no, the, nope, the multi-field is the field going down the middle.
So over at Reed Street, just two softball fields or?
Two softball fields, and when it's not softball season, there's a full-sized field right down the middle.
Because as it is now, we have spring, summer, and fall softball, so we go till almost end of October.
That field, that field that we have over there is kind of a bonus field, if you will, just by the way everything got laid out, so, you know, the mentality with Bicentennial area is it's a softball complex.
And how many parking spots are over there?
That is probably going to be somewhat of an issue because it's going to be something, really what it is now.
Because you've got four teams at twelve, that's almost fifty cars.
Yep.
Would we have to buy the new field if we had to do a walkover?
Yeah, that's going to be your solution right there. You're going to have to get on that little cut across and get across.
And what about people parking on the street, are they going to get ticketed if they park in there?
I can't speak to that. I just can't speak.
What about, I noticed there's not a concession stand over at the softball field. Do we possibly have electricity over there? So we want to do a concession stand, because that's our money maker.
Yep, I got you. Isn't there electricity there?
We do. Oh.
We have the scoreboard over there, this has to be electricity.
Okay, great.
Yeah. As far as softball's concerned, pardon the pun, but it's a home run for you guys, it really is. Two brand-new fields.
Now, the fences will stay up all year or just during the winter, high school season?
The temporary fences?
Yes.
If it's softball season and you need them, they'll stay up. Those could literally come down in five minutes.
All right, temporary property, I like the idea.
Okay.
I just concerned about parking, that's all.
Well, again, we have parking concerns in a lot of places. Did I see one more hand back there?
As far as Reed Street Field for multi-purpose field, George, we have varsity games over there, and they're able to park, and people find a parking spot, they don't get ticketed. With this new complex, you'd get ninety parking spots, Steve didn't mention how many there were, it's ninety parking spots, and that's literally thirty yards from the new softball field, so you'd have ninety spaces there, the ones still in front on Reed Street. The only ones using that field in the fall would be a JV soccer game, and that would mean there'd be ten, eight to ten girls' games in the whole fall, and eight to ten boys. Those are the only ones that would be on that field. So with the amount of light you have in the fall, you'd still be able to have a softball game after.
All around the weekend?
Yeah. It's, we don't use it on a weekend unless it's a tournament. So it works out pretty well. A few points, the two towns that don't have them, Hull and Carver, are in the works and voting on it at this point. As you know, Abington's new project has two going in, and this project along with the stadium, we would be, it would be the highlight of the South Shore. We've improved our schools, we're a level-one high school, we don't lose students to different schools as much as we used to. These, this field and this complex would make this town a gym on the South Shore, where everyone would want to come, the state would want to use that stadium. And when I was in the first development stages of this, I didn't see that they were impeding on the pine groves as much as we may, as it may look on that screen, and twenty-five percent, I don't even think you're going in past the playground in the designs that I saw when they first started them. And I will have to say, I was very close to Mr. Warren Nagerian, and my opinion is, yes, he would work with us, but Warren Nagerian would never want to impede the progress of the children of Rockland for that reason. And I really feel that way, and I don't hesitate to tell you that. He would want to work with it and it would, he would make it work. So that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
Just one more question. How are you going to prioritize who has the use of the fields, like the schools, the junior varsity, the varsity and so on and so forth? Because reality is, those are the town teams. The youth teams are basically, they're not, well, they're a feeder team, but they're really private teams.
The priority and the protocol that's in place now would remain the same. And Pete, can you speak to it as a high school?
Yes, high school's always taken preference, then after high school's been youth, then after youth, townspeople, organizations, and then we go out of town. The pecking order's still going to be the same as it always, it's always happened.
And we really don't have a problem with that. Okay. Anybody else?
Light?
Oh, yeah.
I got some comments and questions.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, it's going to be a fully lit facility, which is going to come into one of my bullet points here as well, so. Greatly expanded outdoor physical education classes, obviously, we can do a lot more. Think about if you want to have your, any of the gym teachers want to do anything from a track and field perspective right now at any of those schools around there, they can't do anything. I'm not sure if they take them over and run the track right now, but if they are, it's, you know, I don't want to call it a safety hazard, but it's deteriorating quickly over there, so. Significant savings on busing to external facilities, we already spoke about that a little bit. Currently, the track and field team has to be bussed. JV, Gus?
JV soccer has to be brought over to Esten School for their games.
So it's roughly eight thousand dollars a year that the schools spend on busing to external facilities because of this. Okay? Additional revenue generation through field use rentals, again, keeping the protocol that we have in place, there will be, there will be some rental opportunities there for outside agencies, AAU teams, club soccer teams, club lacrosse teams and so forth, but again, keeping the protocol in place that's there now. And Rich Furlong, who I don't think is, I think he's working, Rich is our field coordinator, he does a fantastic job in making sure everyone's, you know, doing what they're supposed to and the right people are getting the fields when they should be getting the fields. Next point is redundant, there's actually a hundred and twenty new parking spaces, I believe, Gus said ninety, that's including some of the kind of rig rag spaces that are there now, so. Again, redundancy, a little bit savings through utilization of the current lavatories, simple access from the Nyman Center, Nyman Senior Center. Literally, there's a few different ways you can obviously do it, you can do it on either side of Memorial Park, but literally right up the rail tail, right down, and they're there at the track, or they can come on the other side of Memorial Park, right through the little playground area, and they're at the, at the track. Ancillary lighting, so obviously, the whole facility is lit, which adds tremendously to the, to the hours that it's available to everybody. The ancillary lighting of the track allows for expanded residence use, resident use. And what that is, I believe most systems have, if you can envision a bank of lights, there's probably twenty or, I don't know, twenty lights up there. Each one of the banks of lights would have, on a timer, you would hit a timer and one light would come on from each stanchion. So lights, I walked, as I mentioned, I walked the Hanover track a few weeks back, and you could literally actually, you could go out and have a pickup game or soccer or something just with those, those one light, the one light from each stanchion. So a resident wants to use it, obviously, it's got to be in set period of time during the day. Resident wants to use it to go walking, they walk up to a box, they hit the timer, they use the track as long as they want. Obviously, minimal environmental impact, obviously, we do have the issue that we discussed earlier, but as far as, as anything else is concerned, it's a, given the variables that we have right now where it's already a field and or fields, there's no, there's minimal environmental impact as far as getting it up and going. In fact, I can't speak to this scientifically, but part of Gale Associates' findings is, from the Bicentennial side, eliminating the track and so forth actually helps the environmental piece of that area, so. Anything from that perspective?
Steve, I'd just have a question on the lighting. Do butters have to be notified? Because I remember when we were thinking about lighting at the girls varsity field, it was, the Grove Street apartments in that area were considered because they were, they were butters.
Yep.
Does that have, would that have to be addressed?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if anyone knows this, but I believe there's two or three permits that we would have to get here, and I'm sure during that permit process, we would have to go through that process. The way lights work now though, you know, everything almost directly shines down. It, you know, obviously, modern technology, you know, you get away with four stanchions where, you know, if you built this facility ten years ago, there are probably six or eight stanchions, and everything shines directly down, so. So I don't know if I, I don't know if I answered your question, but it would be in the works.
No, you didn't. So win-win, I'm just wondering.
Yep, yep. That would be, really, that's the only of butter, right? I'm not.
What do you have the people on?
Are they classified?
Well, you have people on the left side, I'm thinking like that. You've got.
Where you park now, yeah.
Low Reed.
Low Reed.
Low Reed has a lot of houses.
And just to be clear, there's no lighting at Bicentennial. Just to be clear, there's no lighting going on over at Bicentennial Park.
Oh.
The only lighting is on the main complex.
Isn't there existing lighting now on the track?
There's minimal at best, there's essentially streetlights.
So nothing that we support again?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep. I think at that point, you'd have a big problem with your butters.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yep.
Steve, what's the drainage going to be like over at Bicentennial? Is there a drain pretty well over there?
I think, again, you know, I can't speak scientifically, but there is a piece that Eric, is that up on the, that whole document, is that on the?
It's on the website.
Okay. There's a, on the website, there's the study by Gale Associates, and I do know a piece of that talks about the environmental side, and it does allude to the fact that Bicentennial is actually going to better runoff and so forth, so. Again, I'm not an environmentalist and so forth, I can't speak to that, but their answer is in there. Yep. Okay? Anything else before we get to the finances?
Continue to light on now?
Is this door open? I might have to sashay out.
We sent over to have it posted, so if it's not posted, it will be shortly. On our website will be, we've sent over in the last week, I think we've sent over the warrant, the reuse of South Field is on the website, the Athletic Fields is on the website, the Road Project is on the website. It should be posted up if our web host.
Yep.
Putting it up is usually pretty prompt, but it will be there shortly.
And Pete, what is our official email address that we establish, Park's at?
It's Gmail account, rocklandpark.gov@gmail.
Okay. Anyone that has any concerns, obviously, if you get it that way, we do kind of have to handle the protocol where it comes into the commissioners' furthest, and we'll work through the answers and get them back to you. Believe me, when we go to town meeting, we want to have answers to everything, which is, you know, part of the reason we wanted to do this tonight. I'm sure the darts will be coming at town meeting.
Is the printed article going to be available for town meeting?
There should be.
It's already in the warrant, right? It's already.
It's in the warrant, but we need the hard copy of the warrant, which is supposed to be out now.
It's out.
What's that?
The hard copy of the warrant.
So you're just looking for the verbiage?
It has been, it's been out for, I think, thought I emailed that to you last week.
No, I mean, the hard copy.
Hard copy's already printed of the warrant.
And there's no copies for anyone to get?
Excuse me?
Where are the copies for people to get?
I think they're probably on the table outside of town hall there. There was a pile earlier, but they're at Selectman's Office, I think they're at the library, they're at the scene.
They weren't at the library on today because I was up there.
She picked up a box or someone, someone out, and so hard copies are available, and certainly we have more. We've been printing them in-house because it's much cheaper to print in-house. They're certainly available. Copies for anyone to peruse are on our website. I've emailed the warrant to numerous mailing lists, and if anyone needs it, we'll email them as well, or just email here or call here, but hard copies have been available since last Thursday, I believe.
I didn't see any, I was here earlier, I still haven't seen them out there.
You didn't stop in the Selectman's Office and ask, we were open until eight o'clock.
Then please put them in the lobby.
They probably were and ran out.
All right, so let's, let's get to this because you already see it and get to the nuts and bolts. Very simply, it's a three-point-nine million dollar debt exclusion, which will be on the ranks for fifteen years. Breaking it down, the average single-family residence pays sixty-two, twenty-one in year one, and that ramps down gradually to forty dollars and forty-four cents in the final year of the fifteen-year debt exclusion, and then it's off the books. How about that, huh? Lights back on, I see.
There you go.
All right, so I know you guys probably have some questions, and hopefully we have answers for it.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you for you guys doing this. Uh, I, I just want to say thank you, uh, for you guys doing this, I know you brought it up a while back, and like I said, it went dormant for a while. Um, you know, I think about, we just had a lacrosse game over at the high school, I think, had a game over in Norwell, and their facility was absolutely beautiful, but then you look at their schools and their, I mean, I think their schools are a good school system, but obviously the
Cat before the horse.
I, I talked to a father that I know from hockey team, and he said, you know, we just, we decided to put the money there first, and, um, but it was absolutely beautiful, they had, every team had their own facility and was practicing, it was really neat to see, like you said, the lacrosse team had a, just speaking for the lacrosse team, because I now have a player on the high school team, it's very late to get out there and they're doing it in the gym. Um, the, you know, as far as, you know, that new memorial we have up there for the veterans, that is a beautiful, beautiful, uh, memorial, and when you come up over that hill and then you also see this dirt pile of a field, to me, it kind of takes away from it, I think the enhancement of that area would be more of a tribute to the veterans than, than what we have up there now, we have a mud pile, and, uh, you know, I invite anyone to go out there and watch a high school, youth lacrosse game, or softball game, uh, it's, it's
Charlie Brown.
It, I mean, it's, and it's, don't watch on a, a muddy day is, is controllable, like when it's rainy, it's, that's, that's nice. I was out there, we were out there this weekend, and it, it would, you know, lacrosse, the ball goes on the ground, they have to scoop it up almost like a shovel, and then that, then that has a netting in it, they're picking up piles of dirt, it's, it's like Charlie Brown, like the, what, what is it, uh, that, that one would walk around, Pigpen, would walk around with a dust bowl, that's what it is, and I'm thinking to myself, what are these kids breathing in, you know, who knows what's in this? And then I saw a couple kids like, you know, you, you, then you shoot the ball, and all that sand's going in the goalie's face, and the kids are rubbing their eyes, I mean, it's, it's, it's embarrassing.
It's embarrassing.
It's embarrassing, and it's, and it's probably a safety hazard, um, the, the, but, you know, I have, I have lacrosse play, so I'm kind of biased, but what really drives me is the point about the track, track and field, I mean, we haven't had an event here for
Two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine, and, and to think about, you know, those kids that dedicate themselves to do track, and every day they're doing an away, um, event, I guess you call it, right?
Meat.
Meat, and, and they can't have pride of having their own facility, it's just, that troubles me more than, more than the lacrosse. Um, the question I have, I guess, is the timeline.
Mm-hmm.
If everything went as planned at town meeting and the vote, when are we talking?
Um, where'd Alan go? He's the man on the timeline.
All right, well, we can
Okay.
Take that, um, what was the other thing I wanted to say?
I want to check the website, see if they're up.
Hey Alan?
Yes, sir.
Timeline, if everything, uh, knock on wood went according to plan here, town meeting, election, so forth?
If town meeting passes, we have, uh, passes the articles, then the Selectman would have to vote to have a special election, uh, there were certain timelines because of posting notices, so, um, preliminarily, uh, I was projecting along with the town clerk that we're looking at June eighteenth.
Okay.
Could be the twenty-fifth.
And then you have the bid process.
Right, and then I guess, once shovels go in the ground, how long till it's up?
Again, I'll have to get you that exact answer, and, but given the variables that we have, it's not, it's not going to take long.
Yeah.
It's not like they're, you know, chipping away at ledge and everything else, um, I mean, it's, it's going to go quick.
And we have this new, there's a business down at the Beavis Rink on BMW called Rad Sports, I mean, that, that's, they're in the business of doing this.
They are, and, um, we plan on approaching them, uh, from a few different angles, um, one is the fact that they're based here in Rockland.
Yeah.
We'd like to kind of work with them to get some, maybe some, either some bells or whistles, or, um, you know, something that they'd be proud to put their name on, especially being in the, in their hometown as well, so.
Yeah. I just think, I mean, I understand that the veterans' point, my, I have a family full of veterans, my father was a Marine, my sister was a Marine, my brother was in the Navy, um, I understand the commitment, and I just think this field would be, and if you could incorporate some dedication to the veterans with the field
Absolutely.
That would be much better than what you have, I mean, the Groves, they're, they're beautiful, but let's face it, a lot of kids hang out up there, and, and I think the lighting of this field will improve that whole area, the, the design of the field, the look of it, I think it's going to be a boon for the veterans that are, that it's dedicated to, I'd be proud if, if that, if that field was, if those Groves are dedicated to my father, um, and having a field adjacent to that, that, that bears a veteran's name, I think that'd be better than what we have now, but that's only my two cents.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
No, I, I would just mention the, to, uh, sit down with these gentlemen whose long concerns of family history, et cetera, I mean, I'm sure that somehow it can be worked out, um, there was no real battle fought there, uh, or the men who passed on, passed on foreign territories, and we dedicated that land to them, um, we can dedicate, we can make it look nice, and improve that whole area now with, with some new trees, with the names of those people, you know, still be remembered, so that everything works, but I think the whole idea is really good, and, you know, we run out of space to put things in the center of town, and this is an important one to be where it's going to be, and along with the concerns of the veterans, because I, I, you know, Army, Navy, we got them all in my family too, so, let's just work together and, um,
I think, uh
See what we can do to make it, uh, and, and, you know, again, um, at the time it dedicates it, uh, we dedicate the stadium, we can have the Allied Veterans Council come there and, uh, you know, remember their time and, and include everybody in it.
As mentioned, that's always been a huge priority of Pete's, and it's, um, it's kind of flowed into the, the park commissioners as well, we all have that same mentality, so, um, that would be the plan.
I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments, um, some people may not realize, but we have somewhat unusual, unusual circumstances for our high school, middle school athletic facilities, they don't have fields, the schools do not have fields, they've always been under the guise and control of the park department, um, and having been involved in youth sports over the years, and you heard, you heard from some groups here tonight with their concerns, but what you don't, what you really don't hear enough is that a lot of these youth groups, those are the ones that have made significant contributions over the years to help maintain these fields, improve these facilities, whether you take, um, the facilities on Spring Street, Hotsa Park, you take the Lower Oval, take all those facilities, um, Bicentennial, it was through the work of all the youth groups, which, Mary, I know you made a comment about the youth kids, I know, but a lot of those kids, they live in town, they grew up in town, and they played multiple sports, and it was a lot of the same reasons and the same people that were helping to get these things done throughout town. I know when I first got involved in politics, it was a field project, uh, we didn't win, we were trying to get turf field at the time up at the stadium, because at that time we seen the need. We were defeated at the ballot, but I will say this, and we held numerous fundraisers as part of that group, was Rockland Youth Football, and we spent well over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of, um, youth money down to revitalize, that was ten plus years ago, down at the Lower Oval. New sports have come into town, lacrosse, more people have put their kids in sports, they're being overused, they, we need to have, we need to have a solution for the kids in town, we have to give them a place to play, a place to practice, a place to grow up, get back so they're not on their, um, iPads, they have iPhones, they need to be outside, they need to get fresh air, they need to build, um, they need to go to have teamwork, lead, all these great skills are through sports, okay? And you don't realize what you have or don't have in town until you start traveling, and once your kids reach a certain age where you travel to other towns, I mean, that was a big, a big point with the school system, when you go to another town, you see that these other, uh, other towns have new schools or a school project, that's what got the, inspired the parents to get out and support these things, and we've supported roads projects, and we have another one, we supported senior center, we supported schools, I think it's time the town really starts to support the kids in town, and they go through, and they go through, and give them a place where they can grow up in a safe environment, okay? When I was president of youth football, we had a team come to town, and they refused to play us because the field was in such deplorable conditions at the time, we've had games canceled because of weather, because the field was unsafe, okay? And that's when we were playing up at the stadium. We've worked with the park department, I've gone to many park department meetings throughout the years, um, it ju, up until recently, we, we didn't have, uh, the staff that we have at the park department, we had three people trying to maintain all these fields throughout town, it's just not enough, and with the, with the small sundry budgets, you have people like A.W. Perry who stepped up, they gave the park department money each year, it was fifty thousand dollars, I mean, it was through things like that that, that we were able to Band-Aid and keep fields up and running, and a lot of people, unless you're involved in the youth sports program, you didn't realize that, and it's time that this town takes the, the kids in this town, in my opinion, seriously, and they look to how they can improve these fields, and they can, they can step up and give the kids at least an opportunity to participate. You talk about track, okay, my son played track, uh, he was on the track team, he, they, his team couldn't host a meet, he was always away, so the parents always had to go away, then you'd have to choose if your other son or your daughter was in another event in town, do I go here or do I stay here, can I get both? So there's certain things that happen that, the sound minor, but to those kids, it's no different than having the new theater, the new, um, having the new tennis courts or basketball courts, there's certain things that help keep kids in school, okay? And if it's a field, if it's lacrosse, if it's football, if it's soccer, if it's softball, whatever it may be, if that's what the kids need just to keep them focused and keep them in school, then we have to help support that, if it's theater, if it's music, any of those things, other, we know curriculum, they're there for that, but it's the else, it's the extracurricular activities to keep the students interested, and we need to support that, I mean, lacrosse, when, when my kids were young, it didn't take off, we tried it, which, we had a joint team with Abington, Rockland, um, some, some of those same people who will be up here supporting us, the same faces back then, okay? And now, we have a high school lacrosse team, and we're behind, we're behind the eight ball, as, as Stephen said, Hanover, if you walk down, if you go to the Hanover facility, I've been there to walk, you hit the button, lights come on, it's a great facility, they in, they're out, it's clean, it's set up well, but it was part of their school project. Rockland didn't have that opportunity to have it added into their school project, okay? What we did get out of the school project was we got a little bit of a study done here, a little bit of a point in the right direction, and when they had talked about orientating the field, the idea between orientating the field was not to offend any veterans, it was to maximize the use of that land down there so that you could solve a multitude of other problems, there was parking that needed to be solved, Memorial Park, which would also give you increased parking for game days when, whether you had it at the stadium, or whether you had it down at the Lower Oval, or what'll be deemed to, whatever the field's going to be called at that point, rededicated. You talk about Bicentennial, I can remember when people, people over there, it was, um, the youth soccer groups, they put in wells, we put in a well down there, Mr. Taylor, who's now a, um, new highway guy, he did the sprinkler system down at the youth off, uh, down at the Lower Oval, so all these people have been around town a long time, have all been involved in trying to get things done, and I think it's time that people say, okay, this is what we need to do, because these same people fundraising, fundraising, fundraising to keep, keep these things going, and then you have a new generation coming through, it's time that the town supports these, the, the new generation coming up, you had a group before us tonight who's going to be doing a playground, going up to support things, all these things are, are admirable, but the town really should be starting to pay for some of this stuff, in my opinion, I mean, that's what makes a town complete, we need police, we need fire, we need schools, we need senior center, we need a library, we need all those things, we need roads, but we also need fields for the kids to grow up, make friends, and want to stay here, and want to actually grow in town, um, so I think it's important that we get out and support it, um, and again, the park department's done a great job based on the staff that they've had, they've been shorthanded, when I was a kid, I played on the Oval, that was ways ago, not quite as old as a lady from Gateway, but ten years younger, I'll be ninety-three then. There you go.
And I was doing Rockland youth soccer
And the same thing.
At the Esten Field, I also know the people that picked up bottles and cans to do Bicentennial Park, the track, only to have them I A A change the rules.
But I, I, and, and let me say, my comment about the fields, I, I, I don't want it to be a reflection of the park commissioners
We all understand that.
Or the park department, I mean, just, uh, overuse of any grass field is going to look like that, and, and that's what, that's what it, it's what it's become, if anyone looked at my backyard before my kids got old enough, I used to have very much pride, now my field is a lacrosse field when, and not up there, and, and it looks as worse as Bicentennial, so it's just the overuse and, 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 and the conditions, and turf takes that out of the equation.
That's the worst thing that we, you know, as a, um, board of commissioners, it's the worst thing that we can do, is tell a group, no, you can't do it, and as I alluded to in one of these, and that was just a quick little synopsis, you know, forty-five hours a week right now of, of time that's been requested, that we just
Can't do.
You know, go down to Kmart parking lot and play in that, you know, what are we going to tell them?
We had studies done at the time where we tried to get the question passed, a natural field takes three days for recovery, these fields don't have three days of recovery, and then when you have bad weather, if you have heavy rain, there's no place to go, the kids play, the call was made, they go out and play, and the park department, as you said, does not want to shut down the field if they don't have to, it's very, it's on rare occasions, you talk about, um, the area behind Memorial Park School, at one time they looked at expanding that, but what was in there with the fill, people were getting caught, there was glass, it was debris that was buried in there when they filled it, um, you talk about makeup games and playing, when I grew up, I played at St. Patrick's Cemetery, now it's filled in, we can't play there no more, that's what kids did when they were younger, those were makeshift fields, you talk about, you got French's Cross on the Millbrook, the playgrounds and fields that they have in there aren't the same size, they're smaller, they're not set up to take and host events, they're not set up to have, um, the array of, um, of young people, students, whether, I mean, we used to have field hockey way back when, we don't have that anymore. Girls softball, I can remember sponsoring a team way back when, going back, I had two girls who played, um, you talk about, um, youth football, I played youth football when I was a kid, so that was forty plus years ago, and then you go through, well, three of my boys went through that program, um, two of my girls went through the program, it's a great program, they still have the same friends from those times that they, they made friends and established them, because it, and, I, I'm proud to say that I'm friends with a lot of those same parents, because our social life became what our kids' social life was, so you didn't mind going out there cooking on the grill and doing things to raise money to help put it back in, I mean, I went down, I can remember seeing John DeWolff from our finance committee, asking him for the money for the field over there, and I got laughed out of the finance committee meeting, okay? I can remember asking for, and Mr. Ryan was on the board at that time, I can remember asking for a toll bill so we could donate the money back to the town, so we've tried a lot of different things, it's time the taxpayers
Do you know the expression, you have a ton of candy? I literally had a ton of candy in my body for Rockland youth soccer, I was the treasurer.
And, and I think a lot of people in this room have been through it, and a lot of people understand what happens, and all I can say is I hope that at town meeting floor, that people understand it, they support it, and then once it passes town meeting, I hope they come back out with the balance and support it again, because it's something that's needed in this town, we, we have to reinvest in our youth, and if we don't reinvest in our youth, what type of town are we? We really have to think about it, as firms tweak in the plan and change in things to make sure it's accommodates a multitude of people, whether it's the light and, whether it's the veterans, whether it's the butters, I'm sure all that can be worked out, but the gist of the thing is we need to start supporting the youth in the town as well, we have to do, we've given them the schools, we've got a senior center, and, and you talk about walking, it's a great place for people to walk, I walk on Bicentennial now, you probably can't tell by the size of it, because after we walk, of course, we go out and eat and have a beer, but But the idea is, you, you want, I see more and more people utilizing that, when the weather gets better, a lot of people are out, and, and it's a town property, that's what it's for, so people can use it, it's not just for the youth groups, it's not just for the high schools, it's not just for, and, it's for everybody in town, and that's what we want this to be, we want that walking track so you can go out and get exercise, you want it so you can go on over there. My kids are grown, I have nieces and nephews who still live in town, maybe someday we'll have grandchildren, but it's still something I'm going to go for and support because I think it's needed in town, just as, just as the Rose and the senior center, I'm not there yet, but when I get there, maybe I'll need an addition, you know, because it's getting a lot of use.
It's a modern town, it is.
Well, again
Sorry.
Hey, can I say one thing too, and just to wrap it up here, um, I'll take my park commissioner hat off for a minute here, and, you know, as a, as a lifelong resident of Rockland who, you know, about twenty years ago decided to, uh, build and stay here, um, you know, I have five kids, but the kids are rapidly going through the system here, so from a personal, you know, I don't want anyone to get the impression that we're packing want anyone to get the impression that we're packing a room, or packing the ballot box, you know, with people that just want it for their kids, and, you know, this is, I've always been in the impression you spend money to make money sometimes, and, you know, home values, things like that, just the overall aura of the town. I forget, I think, who was it that said this would be the, the crown jewel of the South Shore? You know, you, you factor this in with the, at the stadium, and we got some good stuff going on, so.
I just wanted to comment, I'm a twenty-one-year resident, proud resident of Rockland. And somewhat to what Steve said, I have three kids, and they're getting older, so this will not benefit me as it would the average town resident. But I just wanna applaud this proposal, and I agree wholeheartedly what you're saying, Mr. Kimball.
Thank you.
Get right on. Any else?
My youngest kids, my youngest kids are approaching the late thirties, and I'm still for it. You know, because every time, every dime you spend on your town adding infrastructure improves the quality of life and the appraisal of your house. If you stay here fifteen years from now, those bills are gone away, and your, your, your house is that much more valuable.
Okay. Thank you all for listening. Moving on to item number nine on the agenda. Elstar, we have a Southfield update. Mr. Barry.
You know how to clear a room.
There you go.
Give everybody a moment to settle in.
I just think we need to let people know the circumstances.
Sure.
Without a school, another school project.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Great to meet you, Matt Barry. Really great pre-meeting. Very excited about the improvements that you're talking about for the town. I really agree with everything everyone's said. It's a real benefit for the town. It could really be a great sports facility. Great to see you, Mr. Mullin, on the board. Congratulations. And so, I look forward to working with you and everyone who got re-elected. This quick update on the progress we're making, and preparation for the planning board meeting tomorrow night. And we have a meeting with Rockland Open Space on Thursday evening, so we're.
Thank you. Is that good? All right.
Think we need to shut the lights off again for the people at home, or?
You're good. I adjusted the iris and the cameras.
Oh, so we're good now? Thank you.
So, just to start again, we've set strategic goals from the day we purchased the project. Maximize the economic benefit to the town, minimize the need for town services, capitalize on the existing and future infrastructure, and resurrect the ambitious vision. And we'll remind ourselves of these, we remind ourselves of these as every decision we make. We try to ensure that we pay attention to these strategic goals as we make our incremental decisions moving forward on the project. Open space preservation, we've committed in a number of forums, commit again, the project had a thousand acres of open space, and we think through a number of transactions that we're being moving forward with, we'll be able to preserve open space. We also think we should be a good citizen of the town. And so, as part of finding high-quality open space, there is a project at the end of Union Street that was proposed to be a forty B development. It would be a significant and dense development in residential neighborhood. As a part of our plans, we have made, come to an agreement with that particular landowner, that we would take that land in swap for them to develop some homes inside of Southfield. That would then have the owner of that land become us. We would then preserve that land as open space, and the forty B project that has been proposed and discussed would no longer go forward. And so, that's an agreement that we've put in place. It's a signed contract between us and the homeowner. And we are hopeful, as we go through this process and the zoning is successful, we'll consummate that real estate transaction and start their development of homes inside of Southfield. And then, we'll move forward to preserve this land as open space going forward. Additional open space.
Can I comment for one sec, Matt?
Absolutely.
I did speak with the owner, Mohammed from Stonebridge, and there is a deal. It is contingent upon approval at town meeting of this going forward. And that would allow this to go through, be open space into perpetuity. As well, I believe Elstar's discussing taking the existing structure that's there, and possibly using that as like a visitors-type center where they could utilize it to teach things and whatnot.
I know, I'm gonna save that agreement on Thursday.
So, and I'll be at that meeting as well, and so will the town's attorney. So, but at any rate, I just wanted to comment on that. So, I wanna applaud Elstar and Mohammed from Stonebridge for actually working together to make this happen. Because I think it's a benefit for the town of Rockland, and it's, it's a benefit for all the citizens up that end of Union Street. And it's, it's really good for the town because we're gonna be able to take open space there, because we were encroaching on some open space to make the development happen on the other side. So, I think it'll all work out. So, I think it's actually.
It's next to park service anyway.
No, I know, but his forty B was already green flagged by the state.
Can I offer to, to do this?
So, I think, I think it's a great thing for the town, and both sides should get credit for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have our own recreation complex. You may have seen that we've announced, it's always been part of the plans. We have moved the recreation complex to the center of the project, so it will now be located just north of the hangar building, on the more major roads in the complex. Will include ten soccer fields, street hockey rinks. We intend to freeze the street hockey rinks in the, in the winter, so we can skate on them. We, so much like our little Fenway Park, we're gonna keep it. We're relocating it to another more prominent location, directly on Memorial Grove. Will include playgrounds, basketball courts. We wanna make sure that we can continue the summer concert series, and move forward with other passive and active recreational amenities as a part of that complex. And as you remember, there's an opportunity for the youth soccer, for the youth sports, and all the towns to have discounted. So, Rockland will have discounted rates for use of these fields. Studios, we've continued on. We're building, this is a Google Maps image of the Ghostbusters set from last year, but we have moved on with two additional movies that are filming right now. We have one in the hangar filming. And we have nine hundred and seventy-six lineal feet of a streetscape, very familiar Boston downtown. We also, working with the town manager and your building department, have been able to add another streetscape that looks like a neighborhood in Watertown in Rockland. So, while we've been here, we've now secured filming of three movies. We have two more in the works, and we feel like we'll get the vast majority of filming that occurs here in Boston allows us to move on with the renovation of the hangar and some other activity on the site. All of the work for construction, our union jobs, and most of what they do for the catering and purchase of supplies, they're doing locally. And so, I think it's a great benefit to the local economy. We've continued on our master planning. We've designed what we've been calling Main Street, which is the roadway that runs from the roundabout up into the hangar. We've submitted that to the Southfield Redevelopment Authority for approval. We've continued with master planning to create a roadway grid that allows us to enhance and plan for the types of volumes that we're talking about. And so, in our master plan that we brought forward in November of last year, we were very focused on north of the Parkway. And as you remember, you don't have like a.
Sneak out here, just walking away from my microphone again, but.
Take it with you.
Orient everyone.
Take it with you.
Sure.
Quick reorientation. This is the Parkway, so the existing Parkway ends here, street hockey rink is generally here. This portion of the Parkway will be built this year. And as we started studying south of the Parkway, really, we were landlocked by what was previously going to be a golf course, and we're working through the process of amending that permit. But what we found is that we can create two parallel roadway systems to the existing Parkway that really launch and create fairly significant commercial opportunity. And as you see, this roadway system runs almost exclusively in Rockland, creating that full commercial zone and connecting back into the town center district, as shown on the zoning map. So, as we worked with your work group through the process of creating a zoning map, we were simultaneously working through the process to build the hierarchy of roads, to build from the Parkway and Main Street to a full understanding of how we would do traffic control on-site, and how we would promote commercial development. So, the roads that are shown in yellow are primarily for commercial development. The road in red is a town center, Main Street-type road. We'll have that ground floor retail and the mixed-use design. The Parkway completion, really excited. The Parkway grant has been issued by MassDOT, and we're under contract to start the road. We have a groundbreaking plan for the first week in May. And the commitment from the contractor, the schedule we put in place will have us with beneficial use. We'll be driving cars on a completed Parkway from Route eighteen all the way up to the Reservoir Park Drive before Thanksgiving, this year Thanksgiving. And as you know, it's a significant achievement for the project, a significant investment on behalf of the governor's office and MassDOT to complete that roadway section, and really creates a circumstance where we have very viable commercial development. Water and sewer, we've continued with design, focused on the MWRA solution routed through Waymouth for both water and sewer. And we're working closely with Waymouth to make an announcement here shortly on the water and sewer solutions. And these, as we've said, we went out and hired four engineering firms. We meet weekly, we've invested our team, we've added to our team with additional staff. I'm joined here by Adam Ashbaugh, who's one of the partners. He's been really primarily focused on these two tasks as a partner level to make sure that this goes forward, and it goes forward as efficiently and as quickly as we can. So, we have MWRA and South Shore Chamber of Commerce, has been great to gather a regional infrastructure work group to look at infrastructure. We've talked from time to time about, this is a distressed water basin, and there is a lot of other development, commercial development opportunities in Rockland and surrounding communities, that whatever our solution is for water and sewer could really unlock additional development. And we're not competitor developers. We own the land. So, we believe in the South Shore, and we believe in Boston. And we believe as each of the individual development brings more business to the South Shore, everyone will benefit from that. And so, we are actively engaged with other developers to solve their water and sewer problems at the same time. We are moving forward with a solar project in Waymouth. It's on their zoning board. We'll be in front of them sometime in May. I know we tried to add solar here in Rockland. We have a few areas that are of limited other use than solar, and we have a commitment to sustainable, a commitment to a smart growth city, and solar and other green energy uses on the site are really important to us. And so, we'll be moving forward with this solar project this year, and hope to be back in front of this, this body and town meeting next year to talk about some areas in Rockland that, that might be available for solar as well. Office development, we're working, that might, you might not recognize it, that's the hangar. The hangar is the center and the heart of our Main Street. We've identified a company that wants to rent the top floor. As you know, the hangar building itself, the free span height, we use as a movie soundstage. There's a building next to it that's about sixty-five thousand square feet, that's more warehouse space. And so, these are the visions, a couple of different architectural renderings as we make progress through signing that lease. And then, we will have the opportunity to start leasing to other smaller firms. We've had smaller firms that were interested, and we also have some kind of exciting temporary use spaces that might also partner and, and come out here and take the rest of that space. So, this would be something we'll move forward with in design this year, and probably be starting the renovation first quarter of next year. Trail development, as we've mentioned, we, we have a goal of attaining fifty miles of hiking and biking trails at Southfield. We've been working closely with Rockland Comm. and Rockland Open Space, and the other towns to open up this spring twenty-one miles of trails. And we will be bringing forward the completed trail maps and design. Some areas are sensitive habitats, and we've been working closely with Natural Heritage and Fish and Wildlife to make sure that as we bring these trails online, that we're respecting the natural habitat at the same time. Residential development, we have a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-unit apartment that is going to be heard at the April twenty-fifth SRA board meeting. It includes approximately twenty thousand square feet of commercial retail. And we also have an age-restricted project coming forward, a combination of multiple age-restricted, moving forward based on the zoning that was passed by Waymouth late last year. Ice hockey complex, we have a hockey rink and owner. It's our expectation we'll be putting two sheets of ice with expansion capacity for six additional sheets. That creates that dynamic entertainment zone near the sports stadium. Abington and Rockland, both in the process of rezoning. You can see, that's the map that was submitted. We think it's important to complete the zoning that was started by Waymouth, bring the zoning back into one seamless plan for the whole project. And we're hopeful that as we move forward early next month, and in June, and in Abington, we will complete that zoning map and have the zoning map in hand to move forward with the other state-level permitting processes that we have to go through to moving forward. Activities calendar, starting Memorial Day, we're gonna launch again, a whole new slate of activities, so everyone's welcome. We're updating our website so that it's easier to read, the calendar is clearer, people can come and enjoy the facilities. We had the opportunity to start the sports complex earlier, and we thought it'd be important to maybe pull our fall festival back from October into September, and start on the sports facility October one, and, and have, you know, another summer of fun like we had last summer. As you know, we have submitted the municipal revenue and costs report. We hired a third-party economist to come in and do an analysis of the proposed zoning change, and how that zoning change would affect Rockland. We went out and found a firm, local, South Shore, thirty years of experience. The founder of the company has a bachelor's from Harvard and a degree from MIT, forty-five years of experience, same firm that did the analysis for Waymouth. And so, we have submitted that to you for your review. This is kind of an oversight of their methods, the way that they go through and analyze the economic costs. Some of these are fairly dry, but there's a couple of economists' methodologies that can be used. In this particular case, they use proportional evaluation, they use the municipal budget information provided by the town accountant. So, these are your hard numbers that have been used in this analysis. And then, they've cited the other sources that they've used for calculating a per-capita cost. Technical memo, didn't translate as well as I had hoped from, looks great on my computer, not so great here. But it's really just this bolded statement at the bottom, as shown by the data. At Build Out, the proposed project is expected to generate an annual thirteen million dollars of net new revenue to the town of Rockland. And so, that is revenue after expenses. This chart shows not as clearly as I would like, but it's approximately seventeen million dollars worth of revenue, subtracting out the four million dollars worth of municipal services that do go to improving your schools, they improve your police department and fire department. And then, after that, there is approximately thirteen million dollars annually of revenue that exceeds the cost of municipal expenses. And that, that's a chart that says graphically what I just said. And that's our update. We look forward to meeting with the planning board, and the planning board meeting tomorrow evening, I think right here. And we'll do a more detailed presentation of the master plan. We have our design team who will be here as well for the presentation. So, we'll be much more focused tomorrow night on the changes in the zoning specifically, and the overall master planning of the site. And then, you know, we are, again, having a meeting with Open Space Thursday evening. And, and we're happy to come back anytime between now and May second. Otherwise, we will see everyone the evening of May second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just have a few. First of all, I just wanna thank you, Matt, and everyone on at Elstar. This project, I think, I think, you know, initially, it's been twenty years now, I think, right, Mary, since you began this whole effort. But seriously, the past period is not just noticed watching, and now, hopefully, going forward as a selectman, there's just, you know, everything I've seen and heard, and, you know, have talked with you about in the past few weeks, is, there's really been a commitment by Elstar to really get Rockland, to work with Rockland, to work with all the different parties. And the announcement you made about the forty B, you know, like in that whole, you know, land swap on Earring Street, if that doesn't, you know, demonstrate really what, you know, that good faith effort has really been about, it really, thank you for that, and I thank you for everything. And also, I know the, the challenge in terms of really, the balancing act that you've done with the town, with Open Space and everyone else, I mean, it is a balancing act, because there are things, you know, to protect and preserve. But at the same time, there's a real opportunity, you know, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, as we're talking about all these improvements and, you know, like in needs, that will really chart the future of Rockland, we hope. You know, like, it really relies on having a vibrant, you know, part of Southfield. Like, in the way, I think you and the, and Ed and the accounting board have been able to do that, really, I think really reflects a lot about our way we're heading. And so, I thank you for that. I just, I'll one question. In terms of how I just, I'll one question, in terms of how long, like the full, oh, oh, how, how long like the full, like, go-to will take to, I mean, like achieve the, the projections that you mentioned, what do you envision after the?
Well, we, we've always thought of this as a 15-year project. It's, it'll take some time. You know, we're, we're heartened by a lot of the success in Boston and the relative lack of new opportunities. Certainly when GE was scouting for a site, the governor's office brought them here to Southfield. We subsequently heard that, you know, 800 people are going to the Seaport District. There's an estimated 4,000 employees coming to Massachusetts. And so 3,200 haven't found a home yet. And we're, we're hopeful that there'll be some of them coming here. And so we're, we're committed, we're conscious of the calendar. These days will not last forever. This is a pretty amazing commercial market right now in Boston, so we want to move as fast as we can to take advantage of it. But we want to be mindful that there'll be one or two economic cycles that we have to weather. And the benefit that LSTAR brings in their partnership is, this is privately held. They're contrarians. And so they spend a lot of time focused on the next downturn and when will that happen? And how should we prepare ourselves? And so it's our expectation that we'll prepare ourselves to weather, weather that storm and still be here 15 years from now finishing the buildings and not only finishing, but owning some of the buildings. And it's our expect, and as we negotiate, you know, some of the land sales that we're talking about, we talk about as land sales to simplify, but we are staying in, in some of these partnerships because of our belief in the project.
Any other questions or comments?
No. I do like to thank you though for that, not the Union Street business, I'm sure that the residents in that area, I don't know if they're fully aware of it now, but I hope they are and they understand that, you know, get out there and change that zoning, help us out, and they're gonna be helped out big time. So, let's do it. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much. That's all I got to say too.
I just want to remind people that there is a planning board here tomorrow night, 7:30, it's here. So encourage anyone who has questions, concerns to come. I know that LSTAR has been very open with meeting with different groups, whether it was with Open Space, whether it was, I know, Mary, early on, they started meeting with you and some of your folks. When they first came to town, they contacted the Board of Selectmen. They've been pretty upfront, they've been able to generate a lot of positive press compared to the lack of interest we had with the two previous master developers. So based on that, I think it's a significant improvement. No plan is perfect, nobody knows what the future's gonna hold, but we have to make an attempt. And our best attempt at this point is to partner up, change the zoning so that we can move Rockland forward to hopefully in years to come, take care of some of the, the tax burdens for the residents and still provide the, the high level of services that our residents are accustomed to. And whether that means roads, a new fire station, new police station, another school, multiple fire stations, Mary, multiple police stations, multiple schools, multiple fields, multiple roads, you know, all of it. We, we do it by what comes in the door, goes out the door, so that we don't have dead exclusions. In order to continue with the roads project and the fields project, currently the town is faced with dead exclusions. 10 years, 15 years from now, maybe we won't be in those same shoes provided this thing fulfills itself. I know that there's a lot of people out there who worked hard in the past on the plan and through no fault of their own, the previous plan, it just didn't work. The economy didn't cooperate, things changed. We have a new board, we're making changes, we're going through, we're trying a new plan. I can't tell you if, if this plan's gonna be any better than the ones that are out there 20 years ago, but I do know this, if we don't take any action, we'll never know. So we need to take some action. So I asked people to come out, support it at town meeting. It's gonna benefit Rockland, it's the next frontier for Rockland. We don't want to have to follow the other towns, whether that's Waymouth, Abington, Hanover, we want to lead. And the only way Rockland can lead is if Rockland gets out in front. So we ask the people to come out and support it. And we ask all people to come out and support it. I know that multiple departments have been asked any questions, what they need. We've done, we've had a multitude of public forums, we've had zoning review committees. I mean, we've done just about anything we could do to make sure people are informed and we ask them to come out. And, and by working through a partnership with LSTAR, they've actually, with the idea of taking care of the 40B, I think that's a great idea because it alleviates a potential problem that we are facing. It gives the developer a place where he can develop now. And then also for us, for the town, it solves one of our problems that we have. So, and LSTAR, I believe, wants to be here for the long term. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing something like that for us because they could simply just say, nope, turn their back and worry about themselves. But I think they've made a real commitment, an honest commitment, to try to take a look at what the town is facing and see how they can help become a partner with the town. Unlike the other developers we've had who've had the money to do that, they chose simply to make money. And like any other business out there, LSTAR's entitled to make money. In order for them to do the things they need to do, they have to make money. So, but I was taught by a, a great person years ago that if you can help people and make money along the way, that's what gives you self-satisfaction and at the same time, you're always gonna be a good guy because you help people and you can make money while you're doing it. And there's nothing wrong with that. And these people should be applauded. They shouldn't be ashamed for coming before a town to say, we want to change zoning. They should be applauded because they're trying to partner with us to do this. They're trying to go through, they're trying to talk to everybody. And some people may, may not like what they say or some people may not like the outcome, but for the most part, we have to take a look at the majority of the needs of the town and that's why we have to bring this plan forward. It's for the majority, for the good of the entire town, not a handful of people. And, and I'm proud to say this board and Mike, which you're now a part of, that's what this board has been trying to do. We've been trying to make sure that the town can get into the future and not worry about what's coming down the road. And with the help of a lot of volunteers, a lot of employees.
Open Space brokered that 40B deal with Kyle.
I know, I know. A lot of people have worked on the Open Space deal. And we're still continuing to work on other deals.
That's right.
Which, you know, can't be announced as of yet because they're not solidified yet. But again, we're all trying to work to make Rockland a better place and Southfield is a part of Rockland, so we have to help Southfield get there so then in turn it can help Rockland get there. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See everyone tomorrow.
Nice job, yeah. Probably will.
Okay, next up, we have Town Administrator's Report Correspondence. Mr. Chalka?
[inaudible]
Mary, I heard you were gonna move over there.
What? What? He cracks me up, I know. I went to school with Francis.
Mr. Chalka?
I have a number of items, most of which are in the book, but I do want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman. I know that that was your original initiative to see if you could do a land swap on the 40B and get Mohammed involved with Kyle. Kyle and LSTAR were more than willing to look at that, certainly saving us from that. And again, 40B, I think people misunderstand 40B, you know, it's affordable housing, but the concentration that the developer was looking for in this particular case was, was just too great for that size piece of land. And that's the aberration that gives 40B a bad name, but I thought it was a great idea and I, I think you deserve credit for coming up with it and brokering it with Kyle and serving it as a help for the town.
I think there's a lot of people where credit goes around for everybody. Everybody got involved and, and from the onset, just, you know, just the amount of people who went out, walked the site, the fact that we rebutted to the state, even though the state came back with a, an approved plan that Mohammed could come forward, Stonebridge. So the willingness of LSTAR to take a look at some problems, help solve some local problems, which gave us the ability to forge a relationship, as well as with Open Space going through, meeting with them, setting up trails, I mean, in the past, those trails have been there and available, but they weren't being utilized. And now they're gonna be opened up, there's gonna be ambassadors coming forward. And as many people know, there's some lands in there that are, we'll say, covered by national heritage and covered by Concom and things like that, but there's a significant amount of land over there that's open space that could be used for both passive and non-passive recreational use. I mean, I, I think we'd be foolhardy if we didn't take a look at that and try to utilize that for all the residents of Rockland, so.
I, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, I know when that 40B was going, it was the discussion about that, we had groups up here, full houses, and people passed around an email sign-in sheet. I, I think if I'm hearing it right, that deal that's been broken is contingent upon town meeting approval. Wouldn't be a bad idea maybe to reach out to that group though, so.
They'll be getting an email tomorrow.
Organized against it, yeah.
Well, I know we have them all on.
But it is, and if anyone's watching, my intention was tomorrow, I did not know that I was aware of the deal, I've been speaking with the chairman. I had a long discussion with Kyle Porcom today. I did not know that they were going to announce it today. So sometimes I'm aware of some things.
Yeah.
I also know that, and I just found out later this afternoon, I didn't have a chance to get an email out to the board, which as you know, I would normally do. Additionally, my understanding is natural, national heritage, natural heritage has made some final definitions and that information will be coming out from LSTAR at some point. I'm sure they're meeting with the, the planning board tomorrow, they're meeting with Open Space. We are gearing up for town meeting. A good chance for us to remind everybody the town meeting is 7 o'clock, May 2nd, Monday, May 2nd. We need 150 people at 7 o'clock, let's get it up, get it going. This town manages to do a good job at town meeting, addressing the issues and getting a number of items done. But it is critical that this rezoning piece take place in order to put the final cap on that 40B threat. So Mike, I'll be sending out a email tomorrow. I would've sent it out tonight, I didn't know they were gonna announce it tonight, so. I believe, and I was not sure, but I believe I notified the board that we had received our free cash number and it was $1,767,000, which is a little less than last year, but still in the same neighborhood and certainly a tribute to this board and the finance committee and all the departments that work with us. And a portion of that will be going into our stabilization account. I just wanted to make sure people were aware of that number. It's a number I'm happy with and I hope we can continue on the same financial plane that we've been using. I want to use this opportunity to talk about town hall hours again. I know Mary Costas was talking about the warrants. Town hall was open tonight till 8 o'clock. For anybody to walk into any office, building inspector, veterans' office, selectman, town clerk, ask for a copy of the warrant, get a marriage license, check their assessments, do whatever they want. We are open on Tuesday nights, September through June, until 8:00 PM. So you can get any business done. I saw somebody pulled a building permit earlier. We will be closed, for the public to know, on Fridays, July 2nd through September 1st or 2nd, I'll have to look at the calendar. But in return for being open Tuesday nights, town employees, town hall employees are getting Fridays off in the summer.
But they, they won't be working Tuesday nights in the summer?
They will not be working Tuesday nights in the summer. So it's 10 months that they work two nights late, first and third Tuesdays, and then 10 weeks off in the summer, 10 Fridays off in the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I'm gonna try and leave that note in my book. And I had a number of people walk in tonight and just out of curiosity, I asked them, how did you know we're open? And they said, watching this meeting. I'm constantly amazed at the number of people that watch this meeting. Not as amazed as Mike Mullin, who was surprised he's married.
I know. So is true.
I watched the candidates' night. That wasn't funny. That was a.
What was it?
Mike at candidates' night said he's surprised he's married.
I have to lighten it up a little bit.
You're not the only one.
And I've met her a couple of times, she's very pleasant. I don't blame you for being married at all. Opening day softball and, I believe softball and Little League would like to be on April 24th this year at 11:00 AM, that is in your book.
That's the day after the.
And then a parade to the stadium. They've talked to police and fire, it does need your approval.
Do you have a motion?
Motion? Go ahead.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, that's a vote. Ananas?
I was going to say to everybody in my notes, the town reports are available if anybody missed the message. They're also on the website, so they're available here at town hall, senior center, the library, town report, not town warrant. That is also available at town hall, at the senior center and at the library. So the town report, I don't ever remember since I've been here having it available this early. Typically, we're, we're in a rush to get them out by town meeting. So the town report is available. Town warrant also includes all of those things, the athletic fields plan, the Southfield proposal, and the website, I want to say, we have sent over the athletic fields plan, the Southfield proposal, the recent Del Creek decision is online, and the roads proposal is also online. Anybody can visit our website and get copies. Is Dave Taylor still here? Dave is gone. We've got the resignation we received last week of the tree warden, Bob Corby. It's been a pleasure to work for the town as a tree warden and highway superintendent for the past 20 years, but please accept his resignation as the tree warden. It would require the board to appoint, I would recommend that the board appoint Mr. Taylor as interim. We're required by town charter to publicly announce vacancies and, for two weeks, so be fulfilling them and then leave them open for two weeks. So you can't appoint Mr. Taylor tonight, but you can certainly appoint him as interim. And then I imagine after a worldwide search on May 3rd, take whatever action you deem appropriate.
Motion to appoint.
Second.
Temporarily or whatever it is.
Yes.
So, motion to appoint Mr. Taylor as interim tree warden. We had a motion, we have a second, all those in favor? Well, at the same time, I'd like to thank Mr. Corby for his, he has a service. I know it's an elected position, but Bob went above and beyond, as everybody knows, working with department heads out there in that official capacity. So unfortunately, Bob didn't make it through the election. We have a, a new highway super and now an interim tree warden. I wish Mr. Taylor all the luck. And if he needs any help, he can certainly turn to our board and we'll guide him in any way we can.
He has, and let me echo your thoughts, Mr. Chairman. Bob Corby has saved this town thousands upon thousands of dollars due to his personal effort, ingenuity and initiative over the years. I did enjoy working with him. There were some things, of course, like with any department head that I would disagree with him, but he was certainly an asset to the community. Dave Taylor has also shown, I don't want to scare anybody, many of Bob Corby's same traits. What can I do? How can I do it? What can I do to help? Let's go ahead, let's think this thing through. He has been visiting the office, met with myself, he's met with John Clifford, met with Eric Hart, met with his own people. He is certainly doing his best to get up to this, to get up to speed. I know I've had calls from people on a couple of these streets that they were anticipating having done, saying, what happens to my road? I believe we're moving forward on Myrtle and Exchange Street immediately and many of the other roads. I hope the residents do know there is a roads project, phase two package that also has to be approved at town meeting and at a special election if it passes town meeting. There is a thank you letter on a solar panel installation job from Michael Rapperty. He wanted to bring to the attention that the company that did the job for him was ill-prepared for the job, didn't get the proper permits, scope of the work, et cetera, everything seemingly that could go wrong for this homeowner went wrong. And it took three months to get the job done. However, the saving grace, he said, was when they came to the building department and got the help of Tom Ruble. And they said, without the assistance of Tom Ruble. got the help of Tom Ruble, and they said without the assistance of Tom Ruble and John Lucas, the situation would have been exponentially worse and would have carried on for a much longer duration. They got involved when there wasn't a permit and brought the company to task. Their expertise, availability, and training were a valuable asset during this stressful time, and requested that they be officially recognized. Ask a motion, put that in Tom Ruble's personnel file.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? To vote? Don't forget Mr. Lucas.
And Mr. Lucas.
So move.
We will do both. Request from the Memorial Day Committee and Connie Duggan, asking permission to hold the parade on Monday, May 30th, the same route is also, and they would like to extend an invitation to the board, requires a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote, and I would just, could you make sure they get in touch with General Zioli?
They always, we won't do that. And in your books, I think I got it, and it was a late arrival, but I've heard from Jill Maroney, she's writing for the Memorial Park School, they are having a school shoe fundraiser, they've attached a flyer and they're dropping a box off, if anybody would like to donate their soul or shoes, they're using this as an opportunity to raise money for special activities and events, the students of Memorial Park, clear out those old shoes buried in the closet, ask your friends, family, and neighbors to, we're gonna have a box here, you can come in and pay your taxes, do on May 1st, and drop off your old shoes, leave barefoot if you'd like, but if you would, we're trying to support this project by the PAC at the Memorial School, we'll be posting that up online, we'll be getting flyers out, so good time to do your spring cleaning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, we have Selectmen Comments, comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of all of the Board of Selectmen, now the opinions and comments of only the individual member. With that, Mr. Mullin?
First of all, I just want to thank everyone throughout town for the opportunity to serve you. I also wanna thank tonight Senator John Keenan swung by, he was here for about a half of the meeting, and I've worked for Senator Keenan for two years, and I can tell you really, Rockland has no better partner than him in the Senate and in the legislature, working for and working with us, so I just wanted to make sure folks know that he was here, and he's always attuned to everything happening in Rockland, but again, as I mentioned at the outset, I am working to figure out exactly the things I'm able to vote on, and exactly how, of the relationship I do have in town, exactly how I should be handling that, so keep everyone updated, but again, thank you to really the entire town for the opportunity to serve you, and I look forward to working with you gentlemen also, it'll be exciting, and hopefully really productive as well as such.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Johnson?
Sure, yeah, and I wanna welcome Mike, personally welcomed him, I think it's a great addition to the Board, you're gonna enjoy it, I hope, I have over the last eight and a half years, it's been, it's been a good time, but, and I also wanna congratulate Ed and Larry, I know you guys didn't have contested races, but it's, I think it's a testament to the work that you two have done, that you didn't have any opponents. People don't know that the only thing that, you know, they see this meeting, but the time and effort that these guys put in to make sure that the meetings run smoothly, make sure things are being done, and leading, really, not out in the open, but leading and directing the way, much more so than I do, and I'll be the first to admit it. I wanna thank both those gentlemen and congratulate them. Also, the Capital Planning Committee, they were up here tonight, we have three resignations, I've harped on it, these various committees in town, one is the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, a lot of people, I know Facebook is a great place, people complain, and they wanna moan and have gripes about things that are going on in the town, get involved, there are openings, people don't understand, this is a volunteer position, the Finance Committee's a volunteer position, Capital Planning Committee's a volunteer commission, it is a great opportunity to get involved and really see how things are going, and if you have an issue, you have a voice, and that voice is much louder than any presidential election that you can vote on, or any even state election, this is something that can affect the town, and you can raise your hand about a certain appropriation, or raise your hand against it, and you do have a voice, so people should get involved if they wanna complain. Also, again, Facebook, you know, you hear these complaints, and it's a good way to, you know, gauge what's going on. I have been repeatedly seeing posts about brown water, and I know Bill has recently been elected, and congratulations to Bill, but maybe at some point, we should probably address this, and maybe have the water. I, I'm bringing it up now, I'm bringing it up now, maybe for next meeting, I know it's not on the agenda this meeting, but there's been some complaints about brown water, and I think it's flushing hydrants, but it'd be good probably to, this is, a lot of people watch this, and it'd be a good place to maybe have the commission come up and maybe address it if you want.
I'm already starting to address it.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, yeah.
It's due to the mains, when you flush them, the sediment on the bottom, the cast iron mains way back way, they're still getting disturbed.
Yeah, but it's good, but I think if we put it on our agenda, people would see it, maybe focus on it, and maybe understand that it is a normal process of any municipal water, it'd be maybe a good thing to add.
Not to interrupt you, but with regards to the water, maybe if they could post, you know, what they're doing, for what areas they're doing, that people would be aware, so they won't put a load of laundry in or something that might get soiled from the discolored water, or maybe they could plan accordingly, if they knew their hydrants were being flushed or may be affected, so, something to think about in the future, but we should certainly get Mr. Callahan in on the next agenda.
I don't know if they have a set schedule that they're gonna find people, even with their water bill, is there a schedule?
Yeah, something.
All right, well, and then the other thing, I do, I wanna thank Bob Corby for his years of service and his dedication to this town, I think it's remarkable that he's been in that position for 21 years, and I think it's a testament to the work he's done, that he hasn't had an opponent a lot, or many times over those 21 years, it's because of the good work he did. But I also wanna congratulate Dave Taylor, I think Dave will do, will take off from where Bob led the town, and Dave will do an admirable job as well, and, you know, the town election was the other day, again, going back to complaining, and, you know, very, very low turnout, I mean, there was like 500 people that voted in my district, which is like District 5, I think, and it's, you know, you don't, you don't like what's going on, there's only one way to change that, not bitching on Facebook, or, sorry for the language, but not complaining on Facebook is not the way to go about it, you should get out and vote. We all have that right, people fought for that right, and I think it's, the vote is much larger in a town this small than it is in any other election you're gonna have, but enough preaching, thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
My turn in the pulpit? I wanna thank the people of the town for coming out to vote and giving me their vote, and, you know, I have said it's my last term, but I'm gonna make it a good one, I think the town's really moving in a good direction overall, the people on the board, you know, we got, I don't wanna say we get rid of anybody or anything, but, you know, there are a lot of axes to grind, people with axes to grind don't belong sitting here, if you got an axe to grind, sit out there and grind it at me, I can, and we can help you smooth the blade out and get those nicks and dings out, but you don't want axe grinders up here, and I don't see any of them sitting right here, quite frankly, on this board at all, and Mike, it's great to have you, this guy's got connections to the Senate, and he knows people, he's gonna be a big help in getting us funds, any funds that are available, that we can tap into, we get now a guy that can approach the right people and help us out, so. And to my friends that lost family and friends this week, too many funerals too late, but, you know, God rest the souls of all those friends of mine and my friends that have, in sadness due to the loss of family members, I just wanna mention that, because there's an awful lot of that going on these days, and basically, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank the people for coming out to vote and giving me the opportunity to serve them again, and as well, welcome aboard, Mike. There was only 17% of the towns residents who actually voted, so keep that in mind, town meetings and most important vote of the year, it sets the budget, we have many articles that impact people financially and set the course of business for the town for the next year to come, and again, it starts promptly at 7:00, provided we have a quorum, and there's many things on the agenda this year that we need the support of the townspeople.
And the quorum's down to 100 now, right?
150.
150, so you don't wanna be on the outside of that 150, if you wanna vote heard, you can have one of 150, it's a very, very large vote that you get to cast.
Yes, yep, no problem at all. Again, as everyone has said, I'd like to wish Mr. Corby well in his future endeavors, and welcome Mr. Taylor aboard, regardless of who is now at the helm of the Highway Department, we're still gonna push forward with the Phase II Roads Project, we're gonna ask the town to support it, the townspeople, it'll be overseen, so it's not an issue if you're concerned about having a new highway person down there. I think we've proven, we've demonstrated in the past that we have the ability to manage projects throughout the town, and we'll be here to assist Mr. Taylor in those endeavors as well, and we ask that you support the Roads Project. As far as anyone else who's newly elected, I'd like to thank them for putting their name out there and actually being elected, Mr. Corby, I know, was water, but we also had.
You get selected, we get brown water?
It was, it was being played about.
Yeah, right, right, it was, he just reminded me of what he was sitting here.
We have.
Remind me of brown water, so.
We have two, two new library trustees, we have Janet Kahn, and we have Jack Ward, we have many incumbents who ran unopposed, as well as, you know, yourself, Larry, myself, Mr. Mullin, you ran unopposed, and thank you for filling Larry's seat, and we will be doing something in the future for Larry as well, and I know those of you may or may not have seen, but Larry was out at the polls for a short time on Saturday, and it was nice to see Larry out there, and nice to see the people coming up to Larry and wishing him well, and we wish him a speedy recovery.
I think about gearing up for next year elections, so, you know, you gotta keep that hope alive with Larry, he's done a great job.
As I've said in the past, Larry's an institution in Rockland, and the same sentiment goes forward for the three individuals who resigned, and again, a letter of regret, Alan. We have a lot of people in town who, a lot of people don't realize how much they've actually done for our town, and we need new people to step up and fill their shoes, because the town doesn't get here by itself, we need your help. We've been fortunate on this board that we have people working in the right direction, working towards bringing Rockland forward, and with Mike on the board, I think we're gonna see more of that to come, and again, any of these boards are out there, that's how you have to get started, you have to get out, volunteer, meet, you meet new people, there's good people, you get the ability to weigh in, you get the ability to help shape the town, and as Mr. Johnson said, you know, it's very easy for anyone to make a comment and say, you know, you can do this and that, but it takes a special individual to roll up their sleeves and come in and help solve the problem. Anybody can identify the problem, but it takes, it takes some hard work and it takes some dedication to solve the problem, and that's the type of people we need in our town government, and, you know, this room's empty, but I hope, I hope the people at home hear that, and honestly, I hope the people come out and support everything that this board has brought forward, and I'm sure you're gonna see some recommendations in the articles by Finance Committee as well, but it's with you people at home who vote that actually allow us to be able to do the job, deliver the services, and continue to provide the service and make Rockland a great place to live. I know Mr. Keenan was here earlier, and for the record, John is up for reelection this year, he's done great things for Rockland, whether you're Republican or Democrat, John has always been available to anybody, if you called his office, especially when we're going through anything on the town side, I can attest to this, that his staff, his office was right there with any questions that may have impacted Rockland. So I'd like to at least give John a, you know, I don't wanna say an attaboy, but John has always been there, well, he's always been there for the town of Rockland, and he supports a large area, but anytime Rockland's called, John always picked up the phone, and he responded, or he did something that the town was asking of him, so, and that's all, that's what you need in local government, state government, you need someone with an ear who can get things done for you. As far as the Highway Super, there's an article on there this year that the Board of Selectmen is supporting to go through and make that an appointed position. Everyone should know that the current Highway Super would serve out their full three-year term if this article was successful at town meeting, and that individuals, as well as any other individuals, at the end of that term would have the availability to apply. The premise behind it is, we had some incidents in town recently, and we're looking to try to, try to put the town in a better light with regards to those incidents, we can't blame anybody in particular for those incidents, but we can take corrective action in the future to help prevent them, and again, we're asking people support having an appointed Highway Super in the future, that's an important step for the town, to make sure that similar incidents don't happen again in the future, and if they were, that they're addressed appropriately. With that, that's all I have for tonight, I thank you for tuning in, don't forget Planning Board meeting tomorrow night for South Field rezoning, as well as some other zoning issues that are on the warrant. There's an Open Space meeting on Thursday, I believe it's at 6:45, again, to address some of the open space issues that are out there at the base, and you won't see us again until May 2nd, I believe, which is town meeting, so, and I think by then, we should hopefully have some recommendations from everybody, finance or whatnot will be out there, and so we should be good, so. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
That concludes tonight's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen on WRPS, thanks for watching and good night.